Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hubley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pew, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Welcome to the September 3 city council meeting. And this is a very special meeting in our rotation of meetings. Tonight's a night when we get to, we don't conduct a whole lot of business, but we do get to recognize some really amazing folks, both within our government and within our community. So it'll be a lot of fun. We're proud to have an opportunity to recognize these folks. But we are going to begin this meeting just like we begin our others, and that is by asking God's blessings upon our proceedings. So I'd like to invite Reverend Samantha Tett from Revelation Missionary Baptist Church up. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Let us pray. Father, I thank you for this day and this opportunity that you have extended towards me. I pray that you give each council member a servant's heart to serve the people of Columbus, Georgia. Remind us as leaders to guard our gates and only allow that which is productive to enter into our minds, our bodies, and our soul. Give them the courage and the boldness to stand firm for that which is ethical and correct. Give them the courage, Heavenly Father, to run this race with perseverance and continue to help them fight the good faith of fight, the good fight of faith. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pastor, thank you very much. Please thank your congregation for sharing you with us this evening. Next up, we've got the pledge of allegiance. And we've got a special group that are here. I want to call up Ms. Southern Rivers Lindsay Richardson, Ms. Columbus Sophia. Did I say that right, even after asking?
Sophia.
Sophia. I knew I'd still mess it up. Abdullah, Ms. Columbus Outstanding Teen, Jessica Roberts, and Ms. Historic Columbus Elizabeth Criswell. If y'all would come to the front. The rest of you, please stand as we pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all. Don't go anywhere. Ladies, don't go anywhere just yet. We want you to, normally we have them, the people that pledge tell us their name and how old they are. We won't ask you that. But we will ask you to tell us a little bit about your crown and about the pageant that you succeeded in. You can turn around to the audience.
Hello, I'm Jessica Roberts. I'm Ms. Columbus's outstanding teen. I am part of, we are part of the Miss America program. I'm part of the Miss America's outstanding teen program. And my platform for the Miss America's outstanding teen program is people helping animals, animals helping people. And with my platform, I work with both the people helping animals aspect, which is through pet adoption and fostering, and the animals helping people aspect, which is through therapy animals.
Hello, my name is Sophia Abdullah. I'm Ms. Columbus 2020. My platform is Make Your Mark. And so my goal is to encourage young people to get out in their communities, find what they're most passionate about, and find their place and where they can make their mark on this community.
Hi, everyone. I'm Libby Criswell, Ms. Historic Columbus. And my platform is titled Hope Healing and Happiness: Raising Awareness for Mental Health. This topic is so important to me because 46 million Americans suffer from a mental health disorder, yet half received no treatment this past year. And I just really want to eliminate the stigma attached to this topic and advocate for hope healing and happiness in the lives of all people.
Fantastic. Ladies, could you turn around this way one more time? And now y'all may give them a round of applause.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if they can, without practice, but if you would just say, "You're watching CCG TV." Maybe on three. "You're watching CCG TV."
And look where?
Yeah, just look.
You're watching CCG TV.
By the way, if you want to go by the city manager's office, I'm sure he's going to pay you for that advertisement. Thank you, ladies, and congratulations. We are going to recognize our first recipients tonight of a proclamation. They are some of our citizens, or excuse me, some of our employees with the Peer Award. Before we do that, I want to recognize some other folks that have been working very hard. Most of you know that Dorian has kind of dumped a lot of water along the coast of Florida. And in anticipation of some of those issues in the southeastern part of Georgia, we have received some evacuees. They came in last night to the Civic Center. And I tell you, the work of not only the Red Cross, which is doing an incredible job, but of the Civic Center staff, our public safety personnel, Home for Good, Pat Frey was there, High Clay, most of you don't know High, but he heads up the Community Warriors. They were there in force. And we had DFACS there. And making it go as smoothly as was possible at being uprooted from your home and driven for four hours in a school bus and then dumped out of Civic Center. But things are going very, very well. Want to thank the city manager and deputy city manager, Lisa Goodwin, who has been overseeing this. She's done just a fantastic job at trying to make sure that everything is covered. So we want to thank them for the job that they're doing and pray for those that are still in the path of this hurricane. So we'll call on Counselor Garrett. And we'd like to invite up our Peer Award winners, Charlotte Davis, Erin Torbert, William Brandon, Stacy Pollard, Tamika Colbert. Y'all, please come up so we can recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll read the proclamation. And then while I'm going to do something, there's five of you. I'm going to fill in the names in the whereas paragraph and then finish the proclamation just so y'all know. Whereas the employees of the Columbus Consolidated Government are its most valuable assets. And whereas it is important to recognize the various achievements of employees, including the Peer Award. And whereas the promoting employee excellence through recognition award recognizes employees who make constant contributions to the organization through outstanding job performance, who set example of outstanding quality management, teamwork, and our customer service, and who significantly enhance the work environment by contributing to the personal well-being of coworkers and/or their families. And whereas, and this is the first one, Charlotte Davis, an employee of the inspections and Code Department, has been selected as a recipient for the second quarter of 2019. And Charlotte, if you'll raise your hand. And anybody here to support, if you want to raise your hand. Just let me hear. Thank you, Charlotte. Whereas Erin D. Torbert, an employee of the Human Resources Department, has been selected as a recipient for the second quarter of 2019. Thank you, Erin. Whereas William Brandon, an employee of the Public Works Department, has been selected as a recipient for the second quarter of 2019. Is William here tonight? Okay. Whereas Stacy Pollard, an employee of the Tax Assessor's Office, has been selected as a recipient for the second quarter of 2019. Thank you. And finally, whereas Tamika Colbert, an employee of the Clerk of Council's Office, has been selected as a recipient for the second quarter of 2019. And whereas all citizens of Columbus and employees of the Columbus Consolidated Government are urged to recognize and appreciate the contributions made to the public good by these outstanding employees. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 3, as each of your days.
If you would, we'd like each of you to say a little something. And you can invite the folks that are here with you to stand and recognize them as well, if you like. Erin, come on.
I'm Erin Torbert, for you all who don't know me. I've been with the organization for about two years now with the Human Resources Department. I'm the Employee Relations Coordinator for the city. I take my job very seriously, and I enjoy every aspect of it. So it's a great honor to be in front of you all today. And I thank you all for that opportunity.
Charlotte.
Good evening. My name is Charlotte Davis. I work in inspections and code enforcement as the Inspection Services Coordinator. I have a phenomenal boss. I have phenomenal coworkers. And I wouldn't be who I am today without my family. They're in the back.
Come stand up. Y'all want to stand up? Y'all take a bow? There they are.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Okay, mine is a little lengthy.
That's okay.
Okay. First of all, I just want to say that I am so grateful and so honored to have been selected for this award. I've worked for the city of Columbus in the Clerk of Council's Office for the past 14 years. And during that time, I've completed many tasks, many assignments, and projects. I'm normally in the background, which I don't mind at all. But I must say, it does feel good to be recognized and appreciated for the work that I've done. I have a lot of positive things going on in my life right now. So receiving this award could not have come at a more appropriate time. Aside from receiving this award, as you all know, my position in the Clerk's Office has been, my position in the Clerk's Office has been reclassified, which allowed me to get a pay increase. So. All right. After two and a half years of study, I finally completed my culinary arts program at Columbus Technical College. I'll be graduating from that program in January 2020. I will soon be inducted in the National Honor Society. I have received recommendations for the PISO Scholarship and the J. Robert Jones Student Support Grant. I would like to thank my family members for being so supportive all the time. They always support me in everything that I do. And I would also like to take the time to give a special thank you to my boss, Clerk of Council Sandra Davis. Sandra was the deputy clerk, she was the deputy clerk when I started working in the Clerk's Office. And she and I worked together for several years before she left to become the clerk in Clayton County. I must admit, I was elated when I found out she would be coming back to the city of Columbus as the new clerk. As long as I've worked with Sandra, she has always exercised professionalism. And she has been consistent demonstrating integrity and high ethical standards. In my eyes, she has always been a true leader. People often say, "If you talk the talk, you should walk the walk." Well, she doesn't even talk the talk. She just walks the walk. And I just want to say, "Thank you, Sandra. Thank you for being who you are. It is a privilege and an honor to have you as my boss." And I also want to say thank you to my coworkers, Brittany and Lindsay. They are always supportive of everything that I do as well. And it's great working for the Clerk of Council's Office. So thank you.
Counselor Barnes? I'm sorry. Stacy, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Stacy Pollard. And I work in the Tax Assessor's Office. I've been there eight years. I'm an appraiser. I enjoy my job very much and my coworkers. I work with a great team of people. And I'm very appreciative to be receiving this award today.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, you know we would be lost with a capital L if it was not for the Clerk of Council's Office. And you know, Tamika, you have been here a long time. You always sit in the background. You stay in the background. You're very, I learned a long time ago from my grandmother. If you're going to be a team player, you be loyal, you work hard. And you have done that. And you want to know something? I've taken the time. Because when I saw that you were receiving a Peer Award, I did my little research. So I'd just like to let the people here know what caliber all these individuals are. They're just phenomenal. But Tamika, of all the things that you've done here, you have been the secretary for many boards and commissions, Taxi Cab Commission, Charter Review. And all of this requires a lot of work. The Council's Finance Committee, the Muskogee County School Board and City Council's Growth Development Committee, the Muskogee County School Board and City Council's Joint Property Committee, the Muskogee County and School Council's Joint Tax Committee. Plus, you've worked in a lot of other areas here. And you have completed countless things for this council here. And I can remember recently that you were laid off for a few months. But a lot of people don't realize, just to show you the caliber of individuals here that are self-sacrificing. Even though you were laid off for a few months from your part-time position, which your position was part-time, you continued to come to work without pay just so the office workload would not become too overwhelming for your fellow workers. That's commendable to me, to do something. That's what you call commitment.
Thank you.
And during that audit process that we had, which was really laborious, because I came up there, we had to review that you went from council, all of you went through council minutes from '96 to 2018 by physically lifting and going through boxes, looking through filing cabinets and E-cap and Doc Depot just to make sure that all of the minutes are accountable for our citizens. You've just done a tremendous job. We follow a lot of fanfare. That's what commitment. But when I found out that you were coming here for a Peer Award, you're not going to say, "I can sit up here," and I must say, we call this the bully pulpit, I guess, of, and let you know how much you are appreciated by this mayor and council. And just thank you so much for all that you've done. And thank all of you for your commitment and service as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Thank all of you. Y'all, if y'all would come around and let us shake your hands and thank you. By the way, I know this mayor and council. We're lost without anybody that gives us a little guy. Next, we're going to acknowledge another one of our outstanding employees with the Columbus Consolidated Government. And Counselor Barnes, if you turn your light on. I want to ask Mr. Alan Brown to come up. It's fun watching all you guys squirm. Y'all hate recognition.
Ah, they're terrible.
And you want to know something? You're right. You can tell from the way you walked up. You felt uncomfortable. But you want to, that speaks to your character.
Yes.
And you don't look for anything like this. But I'm glad that we do have. Well, you don't have any control over it. All you good employees, we're going to recognize you. So you might be a little uncomfortable. But I want you just to enjoy and savor this moment here. And so it is my pleasure to read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas the employees of the Columbus Consolidated Government are its most valuable asset. And whereas it is important to recognize the various achievements of employees. And whereas the individual excellence award is the biggest form of recognition given to an employee of the Columbus Consolidated Government. And whereas the individual excellence award recognizes employees who make consistent contributions to the organization through outstanding job performance as viewed by supervisors and managers, and who set an example of outstanding quality management, teamwork, and/or customer service. And whereas Alan Brown, an employee of the Public Works Department, has been selected as a recipient for the second quarter of 2019. And whereas all citizens of Columbus and employees of the Columbus Consolidated Government are urged to recognize and appreciate the contributions made to the public good by this outstanding employee. Now therefore, the Honorable Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 3, 2019, as Alan Brown Day in the city of Columbus, Georgia."
Alan, the floor is yours.
All right. Well, I appreciate the recognition very much, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager. And also to the person that did recognize me in this situation. It's very, very much appreciated. Yes, I've been involved in, I'm sorry, I've been in the urban forestry division for 30 years, 15 years in utility, and 15, 16 years into the municipal part. So I've been in the Greenery Foundation in tree pruning and stuff for 30 years or more. And I enjoy that work, or I wouldn't be doing it. So anyway, I just want to thank y'all. And it's very appreciated.
We appreciate you for the job you do. Come on.
Congratulations, Alan.
You know, we had a chance to host these young ladies that you saw just a moment ago. And Alan, in the mayor's office, just take a brief moment and thank them. Pat Beigler was there. And Sheila Risper was there. And it was just nice to sit down and talk with these folks about the things that they do every day. And it kind of opens your eyes as to how many people it takes to make this government work, how many people it takes to serve the citizens of this community. That's some of the best right there. So we thank them for their work. All right. Next, we've got the Help the Hooch Days. Keep Columbus Beautiful and Gloria. You'll bring your crew up. Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. Whereas the Chattahoochee River is crucial to the history and the development of the Middle Chattahoochee tribe communities. And whereas the Chattahoochee River is approximately 430 miles long, the Chattahoochee, Flint, and Appalachia Cola rivers together make up the Appalachia Cola-Chattahoochee-Flint River Basin. The Chattahoochee River makes up the largest part of the ACF's drainage basin. And whereas the Chattahoochee River supplies 100% of the daily water used by citizens of the Middle Chattahoochee community. And whereas the Chattahoochee River is one of the most valuable resources. And the Chattahoochee River is the longest urban whitewater rafting course in the world, the course that has been described to be "wild as Colorado and warm as Costa Rica." And whereas USA Today selected the Chattahoochee Whitewater Park as one of the top 12 man-made adventures in the world. And whereas pollutants originating from our homes, neighborhoods, parking lots, cars, and construction sites are carried to the Chattahoochee River by stormwater runoff. And whereas a few examples of non-point pollution source includes pet waste, sediment, used motor oil, garden chemicals, paint products, fast food containers, and cigarette butts. And whereas these pollutants flow through the storm drain system throughout the Middle Chattahoochee communities and empty directly into the Chattahoochee River and her tributaries, where they harm wildlife and fisheries, ruin recreation areas, and threaten the purity of the river. And whereas to protect and preserve this most valuable water resource, the Middle Chattahoochee Help the Hooch Committee will conduct the 25th Annual Help the Hooch River Cleanup on October 4 through 5, 2019. And whereas non-point pollution is a product of human abuse and neglect, the Help the Hooch Committee is extending an invitation to every citizen of the Middle Chattahoochee communities to participate in this cleanup process. And the Middle Chattahoochee Help the Hooch Committee will conduct the 8th Annual Golf Tournament on September 6, 2019 at Lakewood Golf Course, Phoenix City, Alabama, to support the Help the Hooch Cleanup Activities and Watershed Festival. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim Friday, September 6, 2019, as Help the Hooch Days.
My name is Henry Jackson. I am the Executive Director at Chattahoochee River Conservancy here in Columbus, Georgia, and the Chairman this year for the Help the Hooch Committee. It has been an absolute honor to serve this committee as its Chair for the second year and to learn from Ms. Gloria and everything she has to offer. And it has been an absolute honor to lead the organization of Chattahoochee River Conservancy over the last three years. And to just watch the way this city has completely embraced its most vibrant and vital natural resource over the last decade and then some. And it has allowed our community to really come back together and to thrive. It has allowed young members of our community, like Mr. Mason Hargrove, who is on the agenda for later tonight, to achieve championships at the world level as far as his prowess in whitewater kayaking. And it's an absolute honor to be able to take care of this river and to be responsible for cleaning it and educating our community. I'm going to ask each of my committee members to introduce themselves, make a quick statement about what it is about this committee that draws them back year after year. And we will be here to answer any questions from anybody in the audience afterwards. If anybody would like any more information on Help the Hooch.
I guess I'm a leadoff. John Brent, I'm still retired. I'm hugging trees and trying to take care of our water resources. And this has been a fantastic activity for me in my retirement to work on and to help not only keep myself active in the community, but be focused on what's extremely important to us in this community, in this region.
Hi, my name's Curtis Bone. This is my first year with Keep Columbus Beautiful and Help the Hooch. I'm a recent graduate with my Bachelor's of Science in Sustainability. And so I'm really excited just to be able to apply that knowledge in the real world.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Oz Roberts. This is my third year as a Commissioner on the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission. I work at Aflac. And Aflac is a green company. So we all want to help our environment. So that's why I'm here to serve. Thank you.
My name is Logan Kegwar. I'm the CCG Stormwater and Flood Plains Manager. Replaced Michael Burgess, so I've got some shoes to fill. But learning. I got my degree in environmental science. It's always been a passion of mine to be outside and enjoy outside. So I figure if I can bring that passion to the city and some education to the public, then hopefully it'll help out as far as pollution.
I'm William Kent with Columbus Water Works. Been there 28 years. This is my 27th Help the Hooch. It's not 25th, it's 27. And very proud of the project. We started off with only 500 volunteers the first year. We had over 11,000 last year. Been involved in this ever since it started. We were one of the anchors, Columbus Water Works was, because we believe in the mission of it is to try to educate and reduce the pollutions in the river. It is our number-one pollution source these days. It is trash. And we have to, you know, we have to keep going. We keep hoping for diminishing returns, but we had pulled out over 100,000 pounds last year out of the waterways. And that's every year. So we got a ways to go. So, but I'm proud to be part of this project and will until I retire.
Good evening. My name is Alex Travis. I'm the Community Engagement Coordinator for Troy University's Phoenix City Campus. This is my first year serving on Help the Hooch. But it's been an honor to help with the planning and execution of the Watershed Festival. I also help to recruit students for a campus cleanup day for the university's Phoenix City Campus. Thank you.
And I'm Gloria Weston, Smart Direct.
And I'm Gloria Weston, Smart Direct for Keep Columbus Beautiful, and our work cannot be completed without volunteers as these that are here now. We can't thank them enough for all that they have done, all that they are doing, and all that they will do to help our communities.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Gloria? Let's see if I can get Gloria's attention. Gloria?
Gloria, before you escape.
Gloria, I wanted to personally, being the District Representative of the Chattahoochee River and Uptown, and the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, want to personally thank you in behalf of all of us. You have done a marvelous job from the day one that I have met you. Your passion and love has been Keep Columbus Beautiful. Keep Columbus Beautiful would not be where it's at today if it wasn't for your dedication, your passion for this community, and yes, you know, we have people that make us look good, and people that are there to help us, but a good leader makes it successful. And your love, your kindness, and your hard work and dedication and sacrifices are showing throughout the years with how beauty and all the development that the Riverwalk has come to. So we'd just like to say thank you for a job well done.
Thank you. I should appreciate it.
And Gloria, let me add before you get away, just because we like embarrassing you. In addition, in addition to being an inspiration to your volunteers, you're an inspiration to the folks of this community. You've, you've lived this job for many, many years, and Columbus is much the better for it. Thank you.
I should appreciate it. Thank you all so very much.
All right, next, Counselor House is going to recognize Constitution Week with George, George Walton Chapter, Oglethorpe Chapter, and Kaweta Falls Chapter, Lucy Spell Rayford Chapter. All those representatives want to come to the microphone, please. Counselor House?
It truly is a privilege to have the opportunity to, to read this proclamation because I'm also a member of the SAR, and my wife's a member of the DAR. That's why she's there. But whereas September the sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-second anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September the sixteenth through September the twenty-second as Constitution Week, and whereas in Columbus, Georgia, citizens are asked to acknowledge the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven and to join George Walton Chapter National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, Oglethorpe Chapter National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, Kaweta Falls Chapter National Society Sons of the American Revolution, and the Lucy Spell Rayford Society Children of the American Revolution in celebration of Constitution Week. Now therefore, B. H. Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim September sixteenth to twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, as Constitution Week.
If y'all would, come introduce yourselves and let us, let us know who you are.
My name's Dan Ginter. I'm the President of the Kaweta Falls Chapter Sons of the American Revolution. Thank you.
My name is Mary Mullins. I'm the Regent of Oglethorpe Chapter Daughters of the American Revolution.
I'm Gloria Johnson, and I'm Regent of the George Walton Chapter of the DAR.
Gloria, while you're at the mic, if I could...
Excuse me?
Would you, would you tell us what you guys did today, earlier today, that was on Facebook?
Yes, it was a magnificent ceremony that we are privileged to take part in each year, the naturalization of forty-nine new citizens to the United States. Judge Clay Land has a really nice program every year, and then we are allowed to participate in it and also host a reception afterwards for all the new citizens and their families and their friends. It's amazing to say the Pledge of Allegiance with them for their first time. It was great. Thank you, Judy.
I'm Ann Mullins, Treasurer of the Oglethorpe Chapter.
I'm Lynn Tate, Past Honorary Regent of George Walton.
I'm Marilyn House, and I'm proud to be a member.
Who are you now?
Robert Moore, Second Vice President of the Kaweta Falls.
Malone Moore, Corresponding Secretary of George Walton Chapter DAR.
Tanya Fontaine, Second Vice Regent of George Walton Chapter and Senior Society President of Lucy Spell Rayford Society.
Maggie Fontaine, Recording Secretary for Lucy Spell Rayford Society.
Will Fontaine, Vice President for the Lucy Spell Rayford Society.
All right. And get y'all to come around so we can shake your hands. I apologize. Counselor Garrett, Leadership Development Program Class of the Two Thousand and Nineteen Day. If those representatives would come forward, and Counselor Garrett, if you want to hit your button, I'll... There you are, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson.
Sorry, I missed that.
We got everybody, Director Hodgson? Okay. Thank you. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation and the record. Whereas the Leadership Development Program is a two-year program designed for potential or existing supervisors and/or managers, and whereas the Leadership Development Program will prepare the employee for high-level technical proficiency required to manage and operate effectively within the Columbus Consolidated Government, and whereas employees enrolled in this program will have the opportunity to develop their skills and increase their promotional opportunities while also networking with other departments and contributing to the City of Columbus. And whereas the program covers a myriad of topics such as basic public administration, team building, effective leadership, HR law, ten roles of managers, interviewing and hiring, and other relevant concepts designed to develop employees with a desire to supervise and manage others, whereas the following employees are now better equipped with the knowledge necessary to meet the increasing demands of an ever-changing workforce. Alexander Bryan, Katina Davis, Crystal Farley, Danielle Frazier, Joe Fusil, Kevin Garza, Marcus Hurd, Lorenzo Jones, Dorrit Lacy, Tammy Beerus Mayo, Jeremy Miles, Melanie Smith, Nikki Smith, and Shane Walker. Now therefore, B. H. Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, does hereby proclaim September 3rd, 2019, as Leadership Development Program Class of Two Thousand and Nineteen Day.
Good evening. We have a few of our graduates here. We have a graduate in Class Fourteen. We only have two here. We had some Labor Day holdouts, but you know, so. This program has been going, and this reiteration, since 2014. We've just continued to try to be able, I've been the Chair the last, it's three years now, I think, Pat?
I'm sorry?
I think three years. You, you, Pat was the Chair before me, so the last three years is going into my...
Yours or yours?
Yeah. So the last three years, we've been just trying to provide information to middle managers and people who are interested in, in growing in the city and learning about other departments, because as many departments as we have, a lot of people are siloed. They're kind of, that is what they do every day. They see their same people every day, their coworkers, but they don't know what other departments do. They don't know what Inspections and Codes does. They don't know what engineering does. They may not know what Public Works does, you know, because they're all in Parks and Rec. So to be able to get these people in the same room for half a day, two times a month, so they can get to know each other and to get to know those other, other departments, so if a problem does come up, you know, we, we love 311, but it's also good if we know that person in that department, we can call and say, hey, what's the status of this, or what's, what's going on? Can you give me some information on this? So it's been, it's been very fruitful. We've had sixty-six graduates since 2014. Forty percent of them have received some type of promotion, whether it's just a promotion up to a different department, things like that, and we've had at least twenty-two percent of those same graduates have gone back to get additional education, whether it be associates or finishing with their bachelor's. So we just wanted to have this opportunity to give them recognition for the hard work in the two-year program that they've gone through, and we've started to incorporate year-long projects. So they come in and they give us a whole project of improvements for the city. So it may be something fairly simple, but, or maybe things very complicated, but they have a whole year to go through with it. They start developing a budget for it. They figure out the personnel. They meet with the department heads, the subject matter experts, and then they present to our committee, which I'd like to recognize, make sure it's Pat Beigler. We have Anne Marie Amiel, Lauren Vance, David Riney is who's here today, Freddie Blackman, Haley Henderson, and Corey Jones in HR, which all helps us put this program together. So I'd like to, at least the two that are here to at least come up and say something if you don't mind.
Hi, my name is Danielle Frazier. I am the Office Manager in Inspections and Code, and it was a pleasure doing this program for the past two years.
Hello, I'm Tammy Beerus Mayo. I'm a Sergeant with the Columbus Police Department, and it has been a treat, and as John stated, it does get you out of that box and get you to see the inner workings of the city government as a whole, so thank you, John. Thank you.
Well, congratulations to both of you on, on engaging in both personal and professional growth. We're very proud of y'all. Y'all come around and let us know.
Thank you for taking the lead, and, and you have big steps to follow behind, Pat. And Isaiah, thank you very much. I remember many, many years ago, because I'm getting old and been here a while, we asked, let's develop our, our people, let them explore one another's department, let us grow them, so instead of always outsourcing, we can go within to show them their appreciation in going to the next level in this government. All of our employees are hard workers, dedicated, and they love this community, because even though we try to pay them what they deserve, sometimes they, the money doesn't matter to them, it's this community, and programs like this will show them an ability that they can move on within the government, that they don't have to get comfort in the department that they're at, that when we need a department head, we can look within our qualified and wonderful, loving people that we have in Columbus, Georgia. So Isaiah, publicly, I like to say thank you for listening. Thank you for taking that initiative. Pat, thank you for running with that ball. And John, now, you're very innovative, young, manly, you can make this happen, and let it continue to grow. Let's show our employee, we might not have a lot of money, but we do care about you, and we do want you to be successful, and we hear your dreams and wants for our community, and thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, next, we've got a proclamation for Recognizing Access to Independence, Information Referral, and Peer Support Day, and that'll be presented by Counselor House.
Thank you, Mayor. As soon as we get the group down.
Oh, yes, sir.
It is an honor to have the opportunity to recognize a group that does great work for the community, and we certainly appreciate all that they do.
That's right, they're a little slow. We're dragging them up here against their will.
That's okay. Not a problem. We got time. Whereas the agency is known as Access to Independence, or A2I, has been an active part of our community since 2010, when it began as a grassroots organization serving the elderly and disabled community in Muskogee County, and whereas the establishment of A2I has grown from covering just the Muskogee County to additionally eight surrounding counties, and whereas A2I has provided the community with several programs funded from the federal, state, and local level to ensure the needs of the elderly and disabled are met to ensure an inclusive community, and whereas to date, A2I has provided over two hundred home modifications to individuals at no cost to the consumer. This has allowed the consumer to fully access their home and the community. And whereas the Money Follows the Person Program is a federal demonstration program that helps Medicaid-eligible individuals currently living in long-term care facilities such as nursing homes, hospitals, and other qualified institutions successfully transition back into the community. Under MFP, A2I has transitioned over one hundred people from the nursing home back into the community. And whereas the establishment of A2I, fifty thousand callers have been provided information and referrals, twenty-five thousand hours of peer support, two thousand hours of computer and Braille training, five thousand hours of community events to include autism awareness, housing, and wellness events, A2I has testified before the Georgia House of Representatives on several occasions for the advancement of self-directed care. Now therefore, B. H. Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, September the 3rd, 2019, as Access to Independence, Information Referral, and Peer Support Day.
Mr. Mayor, how are you doing today?
I'm well, sir. Good to have you here.
Good, it's great, great to be here. My name is Kirk Holcomb. I'm the Executive Director for Access to Independence. Behind me, you see my wonderful employees. I'm going to have them come up and introduce themselves here right quick before I get started any further.
My name is Rico Morrison. I am Assistant Technology Specialist and also a peer supporter.
I'm Anna Vogel. I am the Admin Specialist.
My name is Rashad Jones, and I do peer support. I also do the Braille training, specifically iPhone training, and I also am the Lead Instructor for our Road to Independence Youth Transition Program.
Hi, I'm Rosita Farley. I am the Senior Transition Coordinator and also a peer supporter.
Hi, I'm Mary Hargrove, and I'm a peer supporter.
My name is Mike Kelly. I'm Board Chairperson of the Independent Living Center. I'd like to thank Congressman Wes Moreland and Sanford Bishop for helping us start the organization nine years ago, and Disability Connections out of Macon, Georgia, Geraldine Leverett and Michael Leverett for all the hard work they did. It was something that we started 15 years ago, something that Columbus much needed, and we are very grateful for having the Independent Living Center. And thank you for Columbus's support.
So this is the crew, with the exception of, we are missing, and I want to make sure I get him because I forgot him the last time, Jimmy McMurray, that you are appreciated, and he could not be here, as well as my Assistant Director, who could not be here, Ori Kritnen, who has been a vital part of our organization. And, yeah, and don't let me forget Daniel Webster. He is also part of our Road to Independence Program. I want to make sure I get everyone. We do a lot for the community, and it is because of the city and the state, and we would like to thank you for all your support that we do, the things that can be done that we try really hard to accomplish with our consumers. A2I is very unique as we are a center with people with disabilities, helping those with disabilities. Any type of disability, we do not deny anyone any services that we offer, and we're here to help anyone in the community. We'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your support that you have given us the last couple of years.
Kirk, thank you. We've got a comment from Counselor Thomas.
I just got a text from our Elections Director, Nancy Borin, and she said she wanted everybody to know that during the last election, this group provided free rides to the polls for anybody that needed it, and she's hoping that you're going to do the same thing in the next election. But we do appreciate that and appreciate all the work that you folks do in our community to help those folks who need just a little hand up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kirk, you've got an awesome team and an incredible mission, and we appreciate the way you go about accomplishing it. Y'all, if you can, come around and let us thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I want to let you have this. That's a proclamation. Yes, sir. Thank you for what you do. We have run... Kirk, we ran short on proclamations. I gave my card. We're going to get some too. Thank you. Counselor Thomas, did you have a comment? Okay. All right. Next up, Charmaine, Counselor Crabbe, will recognize Tristan Rock Rollinson Day.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Tristan Rock. I'm here to be, I support the Youth Bowling Association for Georgia. I've been bowling since I was about three. My brothers and my family, my mom especially, pushes me through it the most. I started in Phoenix City before the tornado took down the bowling alley, which is still under Georgia. And then I was transferred to Columbus, where it used to be Peach Bowl in Albeiro. Coach Buddy, well, Buddy McAllister, Marcia McAllister, took me in as one of their bowlers. I took bowling series after I won my first tournament, I was five, and then after that, I took bowling.
You were five when you won your first bowling?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Yes. He's weird.
What took you so long?
I don't know. It was only two years.
That's amazing.
I've traveled around the world a lot. I started going around the world when, I think Cleveland was my first, or New York, I can't remember which one, I started going. I just came back from Michigan and Virginia. Virginia, I got first in American State Games for Georgia. It's a lot.
You've done a lot.
Tristan, you're leaving something out. You're leaving out the little twist in the story. Here, let me tell you about the twist in the story. In 2012, on his eighth birthday, he bowled his very first 200 game during league competition. His competitiveness began to shine, and all of Tristan's dreams to be a competitive bowler like his brothers were beginning to come true until a major injury to his left arm happened on this very same day. Tristan was rushed to Scottish Wright Children's Hospital for reconstructive surgery. And whereas Tristan Rock Rollinson was under medical care for six months, in which made him more determined to continue to bowl and learn to do it without the use of his left arm to hold or guide his ball during his approach. All of Tristan's hard work and dedication paid off because in 2015 and 2016, he won the Eagle Championship from the Southern Scratch Junior Bowling Association. And also in 2016, he placed second in the United States Bowling Congress National Youth Championship. And then in 2017, Georgia Games, which he spoke about, he competed as a scratch bowler at the age of 13 and won the silver medal. This win earned him a spot in the 2019 State Games, which he just came back from that he was talking about. And from, and so from, and they took place in Christianburg, Virginia, just this August 2nd and 4th. So he took on competition from other state games to finish on top and bring back to Columbus the gold medal. And bowling is his greatest passion in life. So therefore, Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 3rd, as Tristan Rock Rollinson Day. Let it go.
And how old are you now?
I'm 15 now.
Ooh, a lot of you.
Outstanding. You could add all my games up and they wouldn't even... If we could, let's get your mom and I guess your brother to stand up. Let's recognize y'all for your support. Outstanding. All right. Next, Counselor House is going to read a proclamation recognizing another one of our outstanding employees, Ms. Katrina Pearson Day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to read this proclamation. Whereas Katrina Pearson has been awarded Professional Manager of the Year by the American Public Works Association, and whereas Katrina Pearson has been employed with the City of Columbus, Georgia for 29 years, she was hired as a communications technician and quickly began learning everything she could, as well as providing solutions to administrative problems. And whereas it was due to her consistent learning and having the necessary skills to do various major projects for the division that the management noticed her abilities and willingness to be a part of the solution and helped build a new division within the Department of Public Works, and that was the Special Enforcement Division. Katrina Pearson's skills and talents earned her the promotion of becoming the Administrative Supervisor. And whereas while working in this capacity, Katrina Pearson continued her education and was able to obtain her Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice and a Master's Degree in Criminal Justice. Since obtaining those degrees, she has continued to work for the Special Enforcement Division during a time of major changes in the industry and changes within the division. It was during these critical times that she obtained her latest promotion to Interim Division Manager of the Special Enforcement Division and has continued to work in this capacity since July 2017. And whereas Katrina Pearson, understanding the complexities of this division and the animal industry, declined to position as Division Manager, but graciously agreed to continue to lead the division as the interim Division Manager and is still working in this capacity. Under her leadership, several new programs have been established, including recipient of a 2018 Petco Spay Neuter Grant, implementing a new facial recognition technology, Finding Rover, to assist in identifying animals and connecting them back to their owners. Off-site adoption events have increased, as well as adoptions during these events. On top of establishing these new programs, Katrina Pearson has maintained a consistent euthanasia rate of 18% or lower, including maintaining a euthanasia rate due to space availability of under 2% annually, which meets the national no-kill standard for animal shelters. And whereas Katrina Pearson's professionalism, leadership skills, creativity, and innovation skills and/or abilities are evident in the excellent reputation afforded to this division by the Columbus community, the ability to have a community feel, they can discuss animal issues and resolve issues with the management over this division is a task in and of itself. It's only due to her caring, compassion, and consistency in dealing with the public that this form of confidence is obtained. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019, as Katrina Pearson Day.
I just wanted to say thank you to my Director, Pat Beigler, for the nomination, as well as Drell Short. It's been a pleasure working for the city these 29 years. I actually thought it was 30, but 29 is good. My daughter was going to be here with me, but my grandson has football practice today, and we want to win on opening day, so I wanted her to let him go to practice. So thank you very much.
Katrina, we appreciate everything you do. You do an amazing, amazing job, and we're grateful to have you on board.
May I add just a couple of words? This Professional Manager of the Year for American Public Works Association is for the entire state of Georgia, so it's not just a local thing. She was selected, it was pretty heavy competition, and she was selected. For those of you who don't keep up with the stats, last month, I haven't seen the latest numbers, our euthanasia rate, due to the work of all the staff out there, was at 10% so far for this calendar year. So she continues, although she's interim, she continues to keep those numbers coming down and down and down, and I'm incredibly proud of her. Thank you.
Fantastic. And I have to say to Director Beigler, we were talking about it the other day, you do a terrific job at lifting your employees up to be recognized for what they do, and that's a mark of good leadership. Thank you. All right. Next up, Walker Garrick is going to recognize Matthew Dolan on Matthew Dolan Day.
Thank you, Mayor Henderson. And I was reading through this beforehand, and you already got me excited, hearing that you're finding ways to not just save money, but help the city make money from something that we were just throwing away. That's very impressive, and I think Director Beigler's already sung your praises and other things about landfills and other ideas you've had, but this is a well-deserved proclamation. Whereas Matthew Dolan has been awarded Young Leader of the Year by the American Public Works Association, and whereas Matthew Dolan currently serves the Columbus Consolidated Government as Manager of the Waste Disposal Division, also known as Landfill. And whereas Matthew Dolan is a graduate of the University of Georgia with a Bachelor of Science in Environmental Sciences, Matthew Dolan began his career with the City of Columbus in December of 2013. And whereas Matthew Dolan is innovative and a great asset to the Columbus Consolidated Government, in an effort to save the city and the taxpayers' money, he has developed several diversion programs to help extend the life of the landfill. And whereas Matthew Dolan is fortunate to find out early in his career that change is vital for progress and change is what he is about, he developed and implemented a pallet recycling program for pine groves, construction, demolition landfill. The program diverts pallets from taking up valuable landfill airspace and generates income, I'm going to repeat that again, generates income from the sale of recycled pallets. And whereas Matthew Dolan has brought about real changes to the city of Columbus, Georgia, and whereas the changes are real, the savings are real, and the impact is huge, Matthew Dolan's dedication and commitment to making Columbus bear goes beyond recognition. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019, as Matthew Dolan Day.
You're not getting away without saying a few things. It doesn't work. I thought I could sneak around the corner here. I just wanted to say I'm very appreciative of the opportunity to come to work for the City of Columbus every day and do something that I truly love and enjoy. So I, thanks a lot.
Matthew, I tell you, we get more and more, the city manager talks all the time about the young leaders within this government. You're one. And especially those that have the courage to innovate and make changes and recommend changes. That's kind of a unique talent. So we're grateful that you're on our team. Thank you for everything you do.
Yes, sir.
Come around, let us thank you. Next is Department of Public Works Day, Counselor Crabbe.
This is exciting because before the meeting today, I was, we were talking about a little issue we're dealing with. So whereas the Department of Public Works has been awarded the Technical and Management Innovation by the American Public Works Association, and whereas in May 2018, a new innovative program was initiated within Columbus Consolidated Government's Public Works Department, the Employee Refresher Orientation Class, or EROC. This program was developed out of necessity to ensure that all employees received firsthand training on all department policies in a classroom environment which encourages open discussion and questions. And whereas, while all city employees are required to attend new higher orientation, it is geared more towards general city policies as well as payroll, insurance... And whereas Matthew Dolan is innovative and a great asset to the Columbus Consolidated Government, in an effort to save the city and the taxpayers' money, he has developed several diversion programs to help extend the life of the landfill. And whereas Matthew Dolan is fortunate to find out early in his career that change is vital for progress, and change is what he is about, he developed and implemented a pallet recycling program for Pine Groves Construction and Demolition Landfill. The program diverts pallets from taking up valuable landfill airspace and generates income... I'm going to repeat that again, generates income from the sale of recycled pallets. And whereas Matthew Dolan has brought about real changes to the City of Columbus, Georgia, and whereas the changes are real, the savings are real, and the impact is huge, Matthew Dolan's dedication and commitment to making Columbus bear goes beyond recognition. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019, as Matthew Dolan Day.[462.53][462.53](applause).
You're not getting away without saying a few things. It doesn't work.
I thought I could sneak around the corner here. I just wanted to say I'm very appreciative of the opportunity to come to work for the City of Columbus every day and do something that I truly love and enjoy. So, I... Thanks a lot.
Matthew, I tell you, we get more and more of the city manager talks all the time about the young leaders within this government. You're one. And especially those that have the courage to innovate and make changes and recommend changes. That's kind of a unique talent, so we're grateful that you're on our team. Thank you for everything you do.
Yes, sir.
Come around, let us thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. To the citizens.
All right, next is Department of Public Works Day, Counselor Crabbe.
This is exciting, because before the meeting today, we were talking about a little issue we're dealing with. So, whereas the Department of Public Works has been awarded the Technical and Management Innovation by the American Public Works Association, and whereas in May 2018, a new innovative program was initiated within Columbus Consolidated Government's Public Works Department, the Employee Refresher Orientation Class, or EROC. This program was developed out of necessity to ensure that all employees received firsthand training on all department policies in a classroom environment, which encourages open discussion and questions. And whereas, while all city employees are required to attend new hire orientation, it is geared more towards general city policies, as well as payroll, insurance, and employee benefits. And whereas, for long-term department employees, it is more than likely had been many years since they have fully reviewed all the department's policies. This resulted in employees often commenting when a policy was violated that they were not aware of the policy. Therefore, it was recognized that a need existed for a better means of ensuring this important departmental information was received and understood by all employees. And whereas, under this program, new hires must attend the next monthly training session immediately after hire. All current employees are required to attend within a twelve-month period. This will be an ongoing program, and employees will be required to attend a refresher session once per year. And whereas, the results of EROC have been very successful based on the fact everyone has a much clearer understanding of the policies and procedures by eliminating gray areas and educating each employee. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019, as Department of Public Works Day.[680.06][680.06](applause).
Let me just say, I'm incredibly lucky to be associated with and affiliated with and work with such a talented group of people. Public Works has got some incredible employees who do awesome things for the city, and I'm humbled to work with them. This program was not just mine, but a number of people in the department who saw the need, and we were able to work through that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Pat, come around.
Yes, sir. Just want to take the opportunity to thank Pat Bigler for her leadership, and I know it has been expressed around the table, but she has done a phenomenal job, not just as a Public Works Director, but has reached out, as Counselor Woodson mentioned, across the entire CCG, to bring employees in for this leadership development training. She initiated the program, and then passed it on to one of our millennials, John Hudson, to take it from there, but she's done an awesome job, and wanted her to know also that Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin would be here, but she's at the Civic Center dealing with the evacuees. It's one of her departments, but thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you.[771.13][771.13](applause). Counselor Woodson?
Pat, Isaiah said it all, but I just want to add one little bit more to it. You are an angel to our community, and we appreciate it, and to our employees. Ever since that day you walked in here and you were hired, you have just taken off running and have developed wonderful programs to help our employees and our community. Even during trials and tribulations, you've always been smiling and ready to help and bring new things. You are what we need in our community, and thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next, Counselor House, recognizing Star Spangled Banner Day.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is special to all of us, so it's a pleasure to read this proclamation. Whereas the Star Spangled Banner, our national anthem, was written during the War of 1812, and whereas by the dawn's early light on September 14th, 1814, Francis Scott Key saw the American flag flying over Fort McHenry, signifying an American victory, and was inspired to write the words of the Star Spangled Banner. And whereas, the Star Spangled Banner became our national anthem on March 3rd, 1931, when President Herbert Hoover signed Public Law 823. And whereas, millions of Americans cherish and respect the words and music of the Star Spangled Banner. And whereas sporting and public events begin with the singing or playing of the national anthem as a reaffirmation of patriotism and love of country. And whereas, the National Society, United States Daughters of 1812, and the Benjamin Harden Chapter calls for a day to observe the historical significance of the Star Spangled Banner and to celebrate the words that Francis Scott Key penned in 1814. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, does hereby proclaim Saturday, September 14th, 2019, as Star Spangled Banner Day.[923.73][923.73](applause).
I'm Lynn Tate, media past president of the Benjamin Harden Chapter and patriotic education chairman, and this year, I think this is the third year I've received this proclamation, but our plans have increased every year, and this year we're presenting a program to three schools on the Star Spangled Banner, St. Anne's, Brookstone, and Flint River Academy in Woodbury. So, we continue to have the program grow, and thank you for recognizing it.
I'm Gloria Johnson, a member of the Benjamin Harden Chapter of the War of 1812. I'm into many of these things, and I can't keep them straight.[980.11][980.11](laughter) But we're very proud of what you're doing.
I'm Mary Mullins. I'm a prospective member of the Daughters of 1812, and this is my sister Ann.
Ann, also a prospective member.
Well, thank you, ladies. If you would, come around, let us thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Very glad to meet you. Gloria, good to see you. Thank you. Oh, I mean, she...
Counselor House, did you have something? Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention really to everybody, if you ever have a chance to go to Baltimore, take a few minutes and go visit Fort McHenry. And it's especially neat if you're there when they decide to put up the big flag. My wife and I and two of our daughters were there a couple of years ago when a group of Korean War-era veterans were there, and they got to hold the flag, which is like seventy feet long, it's huge. And as it went up, one of the park rangers broke into the Star Spangled Banner a cappella, and it was hard to stay calm, because that was pretty special. So, if you ever get a chance to go to Baltimore, visit Fort McHenry, because they really put on some special things there about the Star Spangled Banner.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir, for your comments. All right, Counselor Barnes, going to be recognizing Sickle Cell Disease Awareness Month.
Now recognize individuals, want to see the red? Lois, how are you doing?
Just fine. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay.
I see the best... One of the best husbands in the world. He's going to strategically get ready so he takes some pictures.[1093.13][1093.13](laughter).
Strategic. You're military.
It is my pleasure to read this proclamation. It reads thusly, it says, "Whereas sickle cell disease is an inherited blood disorder that affects red blood cells and for which there is currently no universal cure. Whereas as September is back-to-school month for most children, the Sickle Cell Disease Association of America wants the public to reflect on the children and adults whose lives, education, and careers have been affected by this disease. And whereas, beginning in 1975, the association and its member organizations began conducting month-long events to call attention to sickle cell disease and the need to address the problem at national and at local levels. And whereas, in 1983, the U.S. House of Representatives and President Ronald Reagan unanimously designated September as National Sickle Cell Anemia Awareness Month, in an effort to have Sickle Cell Month officially recognized at all levels. And whereas, the Association for Sickle Cell of the Lower Chattahoochee Region will sponsor a walkathon and parade on September 28th, 2019, to raise funds to benefit sickle cell patients and to increase local public awareness of the devastating effects of this disease. And whereas, the City of Columbus applauds the commitments and contributions that this community provides in helping to make a difference in breaking the sickle cell cycle. Now therefore, the Honorable Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, BH Skip Henderson III, does hereby proclaim the month of September, 2019, as Sickle Cell Disease Awareness Month."[1198.98][1198.98](applause).
and to all the city council members. We just have a blessing to be able to come here and be recognized each year. You know, we've been here a lot, but those of you who've been on the council a long time, it seems the years are just going on by, and we just, like a revolving door, keep coming back. But we're happy to keep coming back. We are a small organization, and I like to say all the time, we may be small, but we're mighty. So, we are doing some good things. We try not to take on what we cannot achieve, and so we have successes. And since I've been coming here, we can increase those successes each year. Just briefly, I'll just update you that we are now, this year, we are very proud to announce that we have opened, not just our organization, in collaboration with other institutions in the city, that we do now have a pediatric sickle cell clinic.
Ooh.
That's very, very cool.
Yes.
And one or two of the doctors was really most responsible for that, but they told me, "Don't call my name, I don't want to be recognized." So, I heard you say something about another employee without fanfare. That's the way these people are. They got that pediatric sickle cell clinic going, and it's in the old pediatric after-hours building. I think that's Seventeenth Street. Is it? Yes. So, we're proud that that's going on, and shortly we will be announcing this year to get another feather in our cap, that we will be opening an adult sickle cell clinic.
Oh, wow.
And that would be an Atlanta-area hematologist coming, and he would rotate his visits to see our sickle cell people between the Tree of Life Health Clinic, where we are located, my office, is in the Tree of Life Healthcare Building, and with Valley Healthcare. So, that person will be coming every few weeks to come down and take care of our adult sickle cell patients. That's been a real feather in our cap this year to get not one, but two
True, yeah.
sickle cell clinics, where people who have this disease can go, where the proper specialty can take care of them. In addition, we had two smaller grants this year, I'm updating you guys today. We had two smaller grants this year, where we will now be able to have a separate committee, so to speak, to provide some transportation for those people who don't have a car, can't get to the doctor all the time. That's where their medical appointments, right here in Columbus. And the other one that some of the shriners helped us to do is to start giving care packages to the patients who are hospitalized in the hospital. So, we are very happy about those accomplishments that this year has brought us, and next year we hope to be even better, as it will then be our 25th year. So, this is 25, so we're just very excited that we are beginning to see some results of our labors. But be positive, we will continue on to work for the better care of people who suffer from this disease.
Well, Lois, you have...
Thank you, Ms. Woodson. Lois, you have stayed the course in this year, and you've really been the focal person through all the ups and downs. I know how the difficulties, because a lot of people do not know
That's right.
realize the extent of sickle cell disease. And I notice that could help me, to always call him to help me, because wherever you're at, he's going to be.[1458.71][1458.71](laughter) You understand?
Thank you, I'm grateful, too.
You've done a marvelous job in bringing awareness to sickle cell. And the clinics, having the clinics on site like that, Reverend Kliert at Tree of Life...
Yes.
They do so much in the community.
Good work, yes.
They do phenomenal, one of the hidden gems
That's right.
in this community to provide the medical care and outreach and support for organizations.
We were so happy that he came to us
Yes.
and offered us, and we were so... We were really blessed by that.
Well, the Tree of Life reaches out to organizations, small organizations, to lend assistance, and so thank you again for all that you all do for individuals who have sickle cell disease.
We need the money.[1505.63][1505.63](laughter).
No, look, I know the drill. You can't do anything about those Benjamins nowadays.
September 28th is our major fundraiser. We need the funds coming in. And Mayor Henderson, I'll have a letter on the Lexus desk in the morning. I want some Columbus City Government to be a team, and you have a lot of employees. You can have them to do $1 each, and we would be so happy. They all did it.
You get that letter to Lexus, I promise you she'll get it to me.[1533.65][1533.65](laughter).
Thank you.
Ms. Woodson, don't come around, let us shake your hand. Thank you for what you do.
All right, thank you. These are my help rings.
Oh, yeah, let's let them introduce themselves. I was remiss, I'm sorry. Y'all please introduce yourselves.
They want to be shy, I may have to...
No, 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 let them go. Come on.
Hi, I'm Jacqueline Lattimore, and I am administrative consultant for the Association of Sickle Cell Lower Chattahoochee Region.
Hi, I'm Ollie. I'm an administrative consultant at the Association of Sickle Cell Lower Chattahoochee Region. I also suffer from sickle cell.
Hi, my name is Kenneth Lattimore. I'm the Vice President of Lower Chattahoochee Region of Sickle Cell, and I also suffer with sickle cell.
Come on, ladies, don't be shy.
Come on, don't be shy. We're going to know your name anyway.
My name is Laqueta Bryant, and I'm a board member with the Sickle Cell Foundation.
That great? You're eighty-nine years.[1592.46][1592.46](laughter).
My name is Ebony Brandt, and I'm a volunteer.
Thank you, Ebony.
And Lois, he stays in the background, would you just let her by, but it's a good husband of yours.
My husband, he's always there for me, and I really appreciate him. He keeps me going.
There you go.
Amen. Y'all come around now, let us know.
Thank you.[1614.86][1614.86](applause).
Thank you, Lois. What do you think Reverend Kliert for that? Let him know.
I'm here to make it. I'm a little festival girl, eh?
There you go. Thank you. There we go. How you doing? Oh, yeah. Hold on, you have to talk to Lois.
I don't blame you.
Lois has been on there. You tell her to give me a call, and we're going to make that pay up for her.
Same day as the festival, so I can remember that. Oh, thank you.
Good to see you, sir.
Thank you for all you do.
Good to see you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for all your work. Thank you, Lois.[1638.86][1638.86](applause). All right, next, we've got Counselor Thomas for one of the more patient individuals in the room, Mason Hargrove. And by the way, all you Alabama fans think you're something special because you have a national title, this dude's got a world title.[1670.01][1670.01](laughter).
You guys get comfortable. This is somebody that has achieved a lot in his sixteen years. I saw you on the news, in the newspaper, on Facebook, and all over town, so it's great to finally see you in person. And I'm glad to read this into the record. Whereas Mason Hargrove, currently sixteen years old, first started whitewater kayaking with his dad at twelve years old, on the Chattahoochee River between Columbus, Georgia and Phoenix City, Alabama. His mom, two sisters, and one brother quickly followed suit. Whereas in April 2017, Mason completed in his first major kayaking competition. The U.S. Nationals during the Paddle South Festival were scheduled in uptown Columbus, Georgia for April. Hosting the competition was a big honor for the City of Columbus. And whereas for Mason, it was an opportunity to show off his hard work, enjoyment of the sport of whitewater kayaking, and commitment to fast-paced learning of the... His mom, two sisters, and one brother quickly followed suit. Whereas in April 2017, Mason completed in his first major kayaking competition. The U.S. Nationals during the Paddle South Festival were scheduled in Uptown Columbus, Georgia, for April. Hosting the competition was a big honor for the city of Columbus. And whereas for Mason, it was an opportunity to show off his hard work, enjoyment of the sport of whitewater kayaking, and commitment to fast-paced learning of the discipline of freestyle, Mason pulled out a win and earned the 2017 Cadet Men's National Freestyle Championship Title. And whereas in May of 2017, Mason was chosen as a Little Shredder for the Jackson Kayak Whitewater Kayaking Team. Little Shredder is a program for children up to age 15 who are working hard and performing higher in the sport of whitewater kayaking than their peers. Mason graduated from this team in 2019. Whereas in January of 2019, Mason was placed on the Jackson Kayaking Regional Whitewater Kayaking Team. This honor comes with the opportunity for Mason to promote the sport of whitewater kayaking with the goal of encouraging others to get outside and enjoy unplugged time on the river. And whereas in March of 2019, Mason tried out for the Junior USA Freestyle Team and placed first after a preliminary and a final round. And whereas in June of 2019, Mason traveled to Sort, Spain, to start training on the World Championship feature. Mason participated in opening ceremonies and carried the flag as the U.S. team made their way through a parade down the streets of Sort, Spain. Mason competed and placed second in the preliminaries against 35 of the best junior men kayakers in the world. He moved on to the semifinal round. Whereas Mason competed against the other 10 semifinalists and placed third, moving him into the finals. Later in the day, Mason competed in the Junior K-1 Finals for the ICF Canoe Freestyle World Championship. Surrounded by four other competitors, two being the other USA teammates, Mason scored his personal best of 960 and led him to win the gold medal and the 2019 Junior K-1 ICF Canoe Freestyle World Championship Title. And whereas Mason is currently volunteering with his family on Tuesdays and Thursday nights, teaching kayaking, the family of six that we see here with us today is also on the Jackson Kayak Regional Whitewater Kayaking Team. Altogether, they have partnered with the nonprofit Team River Runner, whose goal is to get active military and veterans on the river for free or little cost. And whereas the family now travels all over the U.S. in their RV, kayaking in different festivals and competitions, international travel is now on the horizon as the kids push their athletic abilities in the sport of whitewater kayaking. Now therefore, B. H. Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, September the 3rd, 2019, as Mason Hargrove Day. Congratulations, Mason.
Mason?
I would like to thank mostly the city of Columbus and Uptown Columbus and Ross for all the work he does to keep this whitewater course running. This course has brought so much family time and unplugged time to get on the river and just enjoy doing what I love. I'd like to thank all my coaches and people who have believed in me to get me where I am today, and I would like to thank God for giving me the ability just to be able to walk every day.
Mason, man, I got to tell you, we are proud of you. We're glad you are from Columbus, and you bring credit to all of us, and I hope you don't mind us sharing a little bit of that. Would you mind introducing your family?
So, this is my little sister Mary Claire, my mom, Mathis, Kim and Kate, and my dad.
We're proud of all of you, and thank you for what you do.
Absolutely, yes.
Kayak family.
Counselor Woodson.
That's what your T-shirt should say, the kayak family. I just wanted to ask you, because there are times where I go to like relax and meditate down at the river, and I seen a young man, but I don't know if that was you, that it's right there where the waves are really, really strong, and they're like going, their back is against the waves, and they're trying to like, I don't know, try to stay aboard and stuff. And I thought that was amazing. Was that you? Is that what Free Spirit?
It could have been. Our sport is just like a kayak, surfing an ocean wave and doing gymnastics tricks, which each trick has a predetermined point value. So if you do the trick to a certain degree, then you get scored for those points.
Oh, okay, amazing. I've gone there, like I said, to kind of relax and meditate and kind of relieve some stress, and all I do when I see some people there just sit there and go, "Oh, my God, are they crazy?" But it looks amazing. Congratulations, and at your age, you make us very, very proud, and you're inspiration to other young people. Thank you so much.
Mason, what's next?
Just keep traveling and keep training even harder. 2021 is the next World Championships in Nottingham, England, so my next goal is to win the next World Championships.
Oh, wow.
Well, you've got a couple hundred thousand here in Columbus pulling for you, but you've got about 350,000 in this region that appreciate what you're doing, and we're pulling for you. Ross, do you have anything you want to mention?
Well, we're going to be, we're going, on Thursday at 5:30, we're going to be
Come up here to the microphone so the people can hear you on camera.
This isn't for me, this is for him. But on Thursday at 5:30, where Mayor's going to come down to the island, and we're going to do a little dedication for Mason. Mason is actually the third world champion that we have that is trained here at the Rush South Whitewater Park, which is pretty amazing, I think. And his family is going to produce, I think, a couple more. We know, we know Mary Kate's next.
No pressure.
No, we pretty much know, it's a done deal, isn't it, Mary Kate? Yeah, yeah, they're an amazing family. You should, you should look up Hargrove Adventures and see what, all these adventures that they're on.
Well, and I just want to say something. We thank the city of Columbus and Ross for everything that he does in Uptown Columbus. A lot of people don't realize that Uptown is a nonprofit that has revitalized our downtown area. It was a place that we didn't really go to when we first moved here when Mason was born, but now it's a place that we shop and eat and play all day long. And on Thursday nights, we do get people out on the river, we volunteer our time and teach anyone that wants to come out and learn the sport of whitewater kayaking through Team River Runner. If you're a veteran or an active military, they are able to come out for free, and we teach for free. Whitewater Express and Team River Runner donates gear and boats for them to use, and we donate our children's boats, because even our six-year-old is out there in the waves having a blast with our family. And also, Whitewater Express does discounted rates for gear and boat rental at only $10 on Thursday nights, so anybody that wants to come out and learn, you guys or your children can come out and learn. It's a lot of fun, it's a good stress-free time on the river.
You're an amazing family, we appreciate what you do for the community. Thank y'all so much. If you would come through, let us just thank all of you as a family.
Yeah, it is. We have two amazing young men.
Yep. All right, and next, Counselor Thomas with Diaper Need Awareness Week.
It's Ms. Ladsen and group, come on up. I'm delighted to be able to read this into the record and to make our community aware of this need. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry, can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families. And whereas national surveys report that one in three mothers experience diaper need at some time while their children are less than three years of age. And whereas 48% of families delay changing a diaper to extend their supply. And whereas the average infant or toddler requires an average of at least 50 diaper changes per week over three years. And whereas there are no government assistance programs for the purchase or provision of diapers, a monthly supply of diapers can cost as much as 6% of a full-time minimum wage worker's salary. Therefore, obtaining a sufficient supply of diapers can cause economic hardship to families. And whereas a supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for infant and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs. And whereas the people of Columbus recognize that addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for the state's low-income families, and can lead to improved health for families and their communities. And whereas Columbus is proud to be home to the Junior League of Columbus, an official diaper bank registry through the National Diaper Bank Network, Junior League of Columbus is an organization that recognizes the importance of diapers in helping provide economic stability for families and distribute diapers to poor families throughout various channels. And whereas in Columbus, Georgia, citizens are encouraged to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and those organizations that distribute diapers to families in need to help alleviate the diaper need in Columbus, Georgia. Now therefore, B. H. Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim September 23rd, 2019, as Diaper Need Awareness Week. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you all so much. My name is Jennifer Ladsen, I'm the current president of the Junior League of Columbus, and I'd like to thank the mayor and all the members of the council for recognizing National Diaper Need Awareness Week. The Junior League has been active in the Columbus community since 1936, and we, as a part of our mission, attempt to identify and help solve some of the problems that our community has. In around 2015 or 2016, we got involved with diaper need awareness, and we realized that these facts are not just an abstract set of facts, but something that truly affects members of our own community. So in 2017, we pursued certification through the National Diaper Bank Network and became a National Diaper Bank Network affiliated diaper bank. We are the only one in the area, the closest is in Atlanta, and obviously, if a family is in a situation of diaper need, they generally don't have the resources to travel back and forth from Atlanta to obtain a supply of diapers. We have, since our inception, donated about 100,000 diapers to the community, and so, Diaper Need Awareness Week this year, which will be September the 23rd through 27th, is our big push to collect diapers for the year, although we do that all year long.
September what?
The 23rd through the 27th. It's the last week of September.
What a tremendous initiative. And the Junior League's always been a very strong supporter of a number of different organizations in Columbus, so Ms. Ladsen, we appreciate your leadership and appreciate y'all taking this on. You want to introduce everybody with you?
I'm Laura Pate, I'm the chair-elect of the diaper bank for the Junior League this year, and looking forward to serving next year as the chair. We truly appreciate your support and the support of our community in meeting the needs of those less fortunate and taking care of babies.
Ma'am?
Hi, my name's Ashley Ginn, and I'm the 2019-2020 Public Relations and Social Media Chair for the Junior League of Columbus.
It's always the photographers getting left out. Well, ladies, thank y'all so much for what you're doing. If you would come around, yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Is there some place that if someone wants to donate?
Is there a location or a phone number, or how do we do that?
And we can, in several ways. We are, we will take physical diaper donations to our offices, which are at the Win House upstairs. Any member of the league will also be accepting diaper donations that week or at any point in time to take to our storage facility. We will have an Amazon registry set up that should be searchable from our website, and then we also have a link on the website to just, if someone does not want to order diapers, they can donate monetarily, and we will use those funds for
Can you give us the website?
Sure. We are at JLcolumbus.com.
Thank you.
JL Columbus?
JL. And we will have three drop-off locations that we will promote through our social media accounts as well.
Great. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I would expect that it's disposable, but what about cloth diapers? Are those an option, too? Or is it just disposable?
We do not currently accept cloth diapers, yes, it's disposable diapers only. Most of the childcare centers in the area will not accept a child in cloth diapers with sanitary and state regulations. So we do, we do accept and then distribute disposable diapers only.
Okay, thank you.
Our first child, my wife, was committed to cloth diapers. I agree with you.
I did that for my first two and the other two, not so much.
My first child, we had diaper services. It was awesome.
It burned down the day our daughter was born, true story. Thank you. Y'all come around, let us thank you.
I was a baby, and first child, I was never a baby.
And lastly, we've got a couple of resolutions expressing recognition and appreciation to some of the citizens of Columbus who have served on former, on boards. And the first is expressing appreciation to Ms. Mamie Pound for her meritorious service on the Board of Historic and Architectural Review. Second is expressing appreciation to Mr. Jason Quavis for his meritorious service on the Development Authority. Third is expressing appreciation to Mr. Chris Cloninger for his meritorious service on the Downtown Development Authority. And lastly, expressing appreciation to Mr. Dan Scoggins for his meritorious service on the Public Safety Advisory Commission.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
They are approved.
Motion adjourned.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.